And our staff will unmute you, unmute your microphone and announce your name. You'll then be able to provide comments to council. We will start with members of the public who are here in council chambers with us tonight. And then those joining us remotely, we will have two comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. Participation is limited to once per a participation session. During, due to the breadth of tonight's agenda, we do ask participants to keep their comments to under three minutes. And the first session of public participation will be limited to one hour. Thank you for joining us. We'll now begin our meeting with blood allegiance and moment of silence. I will start with roll call.
Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Cervino.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirkman.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Present.
Mr. Weiss.
Present.
Mr. Ewald.
Here.
This, Mr. Mayor, manager, assistant chief, listener here, you have a core.
Thank you. And the mayor did let me know he'll be here a little bit late tonight. With that, we have no, we have no presentations tonight, tonight's agenda, so we will open up the first round of public participation, starting with folks that are in the room. We do have a sign in sheet, if you can provide your name and address. Let us know if you're a resident or not a resident. We'll start with those in council chambers and then we will switch over to those joining us via Zoom.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Meadows. I live and work in the borough of Phoenixville. I'm here representing the survey committee of the Phoenixville Business Alliance. Results of this survey are in no way reflective of the organization itself. As we reached out beyond our membership to include as many businesses as we possibly could in the downtown, in the brief time we had, the survey is simply a reporting of the results. In the spring, we said we would do a follow up to our original survey. I hope everyone received a copy and has had time to read it thoroughly. The following are my opinions in my time allotted that have nothing to do with PBA. They're my personal opinions. I was, I wonder if traffic impact study has been done with regard to the street closures on Bridge Street. The police personnel and public safety was the, did the police and fire personnel, did you have input from them in the closing of the streets? There's an article in the daily local news this week addressed to the extensive process Westchester is going through regarding their street closures. It's very insightful. If anyone wants to read it, I can forward it to you. The lack of good alternative routes for a heavily used connector for state routes 113 and 29 is severely impacted. Loss of roughly 140 existing public parking spaces versus a parking garage at the cost of approximately $20,000 per space. What demographic does the borough survey cover and taxpayer residents of the borough versus surrounding townships? We need to come to a compromise that is more inclusive of all the businesses, not an attitude of it helps one while it hurts another, or it's just a poor business model. Presumably, the businesses that are doing well will continue to do well regardless of the status of the street. The residents who are directly impacted need to be considered. In our own way, we are all an integral part of this growing and vibrant community. We all contribute to its diversity. This past Friday, first Friday, was packed on Bridge Street and Main Street. Bridge Street was open and Main was closed. Bridge being open did not deter people coming out. The restaurants were bustling inside and out, cars were utilizing the parking spaces. There's a few statements that I remember, as I've heard many times, no Marines left behind, no child left behind. Let's look at no businesses left behind. Please take some time to digest all the opinions of your constituency who own businesses and borough residents who are directly impacted by your decision. Thank you for your time. I hope you understood the survey and were able to sort out all the details. Again, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brian O'Leary, 352 Washington Avenue. Last May or June of 21, I filed a petition for a speed bump on Washington Avenue, which is the only, well, it's the first connecting street between 29 and 113. Just discussed, and I've never gotten a response on the, on the petition. And I've heard from various people that it was denied. The council denied it. But the council hasn't informed me, second word, councilwoman hasn't informed me who I had to work with to file the petition. The police department hasn't informed me. So that's disappointing in and of itself. And the, we've had several accidents on Washington Avenue recently from people speeding down the road. The police department, and I thank them for it, did put a police officer on Lincoln Avenue above Washington Avenue, the intersection, to monitor people running the stop sign, but that has nothing to do with the people speeding down the road. Less people stop at that stop sign, but then speed down the road. And we have a number of young children, young families on that street now, but there's, there's probably 15 or 20 kids under five years old that are playing on the sidewalk. And three weeks ago, we had a speeder smash into another car. My neighbor across the street, her cars have been hit twice. And it's, it's a real problem and it's, and it becomes a bigger problem when Bridge Street is closed down. This, I don't have a dog in the fight of closing Bridge Street or not, but I know that traffic on Washington Avenue gets, is pretty bad. And, but one of the things that strikes me as odd is that the 100 block of Washington Avenue as a speed bump, we are similarly situated. The 100 block of Washington Avenue has Star Street as a feeder street, a lot of traffic there. Well, when you shut down Bridge Street, Gay Street is just as busy as a, as a, as a route and people coming off Gay Street down Washington Avenue makes that block just as busy as the 100 block of Washington Avenue. So we're similarly situated. We're being treated differently. I've never been given an answer on the petition. I'd really liked, I don't know if this is the appropriate form, if somebody wants to call me afterwards, I don't want to embarrass anybody right now. But I have heard through other neighbors that the petition was denied. There've been four or five different reasons. We, this particular neighbor, Shirley Porter, who's in misquote, you surely just stand up and say so, please. I believe she was told that the state, on state routes, said there would be no more speed bumps, but Washington Avenue is not a state route. And then I was, she was subsequently told that there was not enough traffic when they did the traffic study on the block. But the traffic study was done in February of 21. Bridge Street was completely closed down. I mean, the town was still closed down from the pandemic. There was no business going on to speak up. So it was a terrible time to do the traffic study. And actually, the member of the police department called me in December of 21, about seven months after I filed the petition and said they were going to be monitoring the traffic. But I didn't really know when that was going to happen. I just thanked him profusely for getting back to me because I thought I had been cast off into the void because seven months had gone by. And then it was like a few weeks later in February, suddenly we have a, a car counter and a speed checker. But there was no traffic to speak of because the pandemic was going on. So that was a terrible time to do that. If you have indeed denied the petition, I'd ask you to reconsider. Put a, put in, do a new speed study at a, on a weekend, on a Saturday, you know, before it gets, before it gets too cold. But, you know, Bridge Street's closed down already, so maybe that ship has sailed. So I don't know if anybody wants to respond to me now or in some other manner, but this is my concern. And I, and I really, really am disappointed that this petition was filed. It has allegedly been considered by the council. And I've never been told anything. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jane Dougdale. I'm a resident of Phoenixville. I spent this last beautiful weekend engaging the public about saving open space in Phoenixville. On first Friday, I was at Bridge Street. And on Saturday and Sunday, I was at Giant Food Store Parking Lot. My quickie message was that we want to keep public land in public hands. There was universal support for this message from the hundreds of people that engaged with me. People are fed up with the loss of open space to development in Phoenixville. Yes, you heard that right. People are fed up with the loss of open space for development in Phoenixville. Some wanted to know exactly where this property is that we want to save. Each time I describe its location, I get a little emotional. It's located along the river, just below the bridge to Montclair, at the end of Washington Avenue, in the midst of a legacy neighborhood of modest, single family homes. What is now three acres of dense woods mitigating the flooding that Phoenixville is heir to and scheduled to host the trailhead for hiking to Valley Forge Park would be leveled. These woods have been recognized by Marilyn McCulsky, Phoenixville's Bluebird Lady, as having lots of potential for the nesting of many bird species, especially bluebirds, along with woodpeckers, finches, chickadees, and water-loving birds. It pains me, and I can see the pain on the faces of those I interact with, to think of this property bulldozed into more luxury, high-density townhomes, at least 80 on seven acres. Phoenixville's Transition and Green Team, who spawned Friends of Open Space, has been thinking about this for a year now. And it's very clear to us that saving this property is exactly what the eminent domain process was created for, to keep public lands or open lands in public hands. You, the Borough Council, can save this property. You can vote tonight to begin the eminent domain process of requesting the court to name a fair market value that the seller, our school district, will receive. Then we can work together to find funds to meet that fair sale price. We, the people, will be in Chester County Court next Monday morning, October 17, to present our case to the judge and hear from him. The Borough Council doesn't have to wait for that. You can vote tonight to start the eminent domain process. Please do. Thank you.
Lisa Longo, I live in Phoenixville Borough. I've been doing a lot of research on eminent domain and I found a lawyer who is preeminent in this area. And here's a quote he just put out. "The COVID-19 pandemic will seem uneventful compared to long-term and irreversible consequences of our rapidly changing environment." "There is no vaccine for global warming." "Eminent domain can and must be used to protect, protect and preserve the environment as part of a comprehensive plan." Phoenixville has such a comprehensive plan that actually calls for open space. We are not anti-development as many people have accused us of. There's a lot of development going on in Phoenixville. What we're saying is, this is the last large parcel adjacent to the downtown and near the river. It can be connected to the Schuylkill River Trail. I have talked to Chester County Parks and Preservation, French and Pickering Conservation, Natural Lands, Brandywine Conservation Trust. All agree this partial would be crucial to preserve. The fact that it's already public land, and as Jane said, keep public land in public hands, is why this is all so important. We, the taxpayers, paid for this land. We are speaking out. As Jane said, universally, the people we talk to want this land preserved. We have heard from three people, because I keep count of this, three, who are in support out of the general public. I have a petition with me tonight that I'd like to give to you all to look at. The names of everyone who has signed, we printed them out, plus we got paper signatures. We're now at over 1,300 signatures. We all have jobs, so we're doing this in our free time. If we can get that kind of support in just a couple of weeks, imagine what we could do in a couple of months. As Jane mentioned, we have a court case on October 17th, and the borough could choose to become a party to that court case. You can join the petition to intervene and you can speak to the judge. And we will finally get some answers on how this process was done. The name of the attorney, just if you want to look them up, is Michael Sahn, S A H N. And I have his website info. If anybody wants it, feel free to reach out. The last point I want to make is most people are unaware of this issue. We were on Bridge Street for first Friday, and almost every person I spoke to had no idea what was going on. And when you tell them, and as Jane said, when you explain where this property is, everybody says, why would you want to build that many townhomes right there? The irreversible and irreparable environmental harm that this would cause is indisputable. The flood management plan and the flood plane was based on old data. Climate change is rapidly changing the nature of storms, as we just saw. So we can't look at this and say, well, we know that flood plain's down there because it's going to keep moving, right? The storms are going to get stronger. And it's not just for the neighborhood I'm concerned about, although the neighbors are very concerned about flooding. Montclair was devastated. Do we really want to be responsible for continuing and worsening that kind of environmental harm? And I'll close with this. Do you believe climate change is real? And if you do, this property is so important to our mitigation of irreparable environmental harm. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Bob Weber, and I live on Washington Avenue, 85 Washington Avenue in the borough. You may have seen some of these signs around town. More popping up as we speak. I think you're getting a sense for the amount of commitment on the part of those of us who believe that there really should be more open space preserved in town. At the last session, we did a lot of requesting and appealing to you as, as the board members, as a, as a council members to enter into a discussion about the use of eminent domain to perhaps bring in the county and, and take this property back to the borough. But we'd never really heard a response to those requests. And I know this is public participation time, but I don't really feel like we have a dialogue here. So I'm kind of asking a question, a second question, which is are there meetings or committees that we should be participating in where we have more of a chance to have an open discussion about the future use of that kind of a property that people would be open to hearing? Because this is us talking, you listening, and kind of we never know what happens after that. So that's a question I'd be happy to hear if you could tell me now or after the meeting. I'd love to know what we should be doing because we really feel strongly about this. The, the third thought is very simple. I don't pretend to understand all the ins and outs of eminent domain. I do understand that the path that the school board has taken in terms of attempting to get capital funds for this property is probably going to be a very long, drawn-out effort. Whereas eminent domain, where the school board would presumably get fair market value for the property much faster and not have to jump through all these hoops, would seem to be a much more easy route to take. So my question really is, what is, what do you see the downside for the residents and the borough of going in that path? It seems like it's a better way to, to solve this problem. But, and I know that you have used it for other, other purposes, such as one of the items of the agenda tonight. So it's not meant to be punitive. In this case, where you're not trying to condemn something, we are basically trying to build something in form of a park and find a use for the space that everybody can support and find to be an addition to the quality of life in town. So we all have ideas. We'd like to find out where we can sit down and converse, share some of those ideas about what we think we could do with the space, whether it's gardens or whatever. Certainly, a park would be a good idea, but, you know, we can come to that decision together. I think that's all we're really asking for. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Kajek. Representing one of my properties at 425 Bridge Street. I'm giving an adverse direction of eminent domain, not to be at all to be misconstrued regarding the kindergarten, kindergarten center, but in opposing venture of eminent domain where I'm directly being impacted, potentially under item 16, which is proceeding the executive session where not enough information is being divulged under the staff reports, specifically under the manager section. So when it comes to eminent domain, and again, this is not to be misinterpreted as any opposition towards the kindergarten center and/or exercising the opportunity for eminent domain. But I own the property at 425 Bridge Street, and there's an issue regarding the Hall Street extension and accommodating the neighboring developer who has a condition in their approvals for the Steelworks project to add the Hall Street extension. Hall Street extension is to continue the Hall Street where it ends presently at Bridge Street and continue it to Paradise Street. Presently, there's a 25-foot width existing for a borough parcel, starting at the utility pole, going to the Barto Pool and Spa formerly known as, which is now the Steel, Steelworks Project. Adverse direction of eminent domain where I get overly concerned as a taxpayer in this municipality who buys properties without any right of ways or risk of condemnation. The borough recently acquired a property located at 381 Bridge Street. Now is known as the future location for the Phoenix Wheel. It was dated on a borough document, October 9th, 2018, that 381 Bridge Street was assessed, or sorry, excuse me, appraised at 185,000, and it was going to be traded for another property located at 17 South Second Avenue, which was assessed, or sorry, appraised at 175,000. There was a $10,000 deficit, but it was to be traded, property for property, tomato for tomato. The Chester County deed recorded shows that the borough acquired the property, not for 10,000, not for 185,000, but for $360,750. This property address only shows a registered 9,480 square feet on the lot, which is less than a quarter of an acre. The neighboring property located at 395 Bridge Street is .56 acres. It's two and a half times the size of 381 Bridge Street. That property was recently eminent domain by this existing council. So I'm sure I'm bringing up some relative points here that anybody would fall. That property was eminent domained for less than one-sixth of the price of the neighboring lot that's also in a flood plain, has unbuildable characteristics to it. It's only valid for a parking lot. It was eminent domain for $65,000. One-sixth of a lot that's neighboring to it that's twice the size. So as an adverse direction of eminent domain, again, not to be misconstrued as a contest or opposition towards the kindergarten center, eminent domain. But there's some serious issues here regarding eminent domain and specifically acquiring properties for the use of, quote, "the Hall Street alignment" versus the Hall Street extension. Hall Street alignment was only intended to be a single lane direction from Paradise to Hall Street for the use of emergency vehicles only. Steelworks proposed a plan where they were going to add a two-lane, two-direction with a cul-de-sac to approximately 450 feet from Bridge Street back. Then from the cul-de-sac is going to be a single lane direction from Paradise for the use of emergency vehicles only. Now Paradise Village comes forward. There's a new plan proposed. All of a sudden, we now need two-lane, two-directions, streetscapes, sidewalks. Who are we accommodating here? Is it for the benefit of the taxpayers in the immediate downtown middle ward? Is it for the benefit? Excuse me. I really hope. Sorry, I don't have any water, but I really hope the executive session occurs before this vote. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John McPhie. I'm the business manager of Diving Cat Studio Gallery and owner of 246 Bridge Street. I'd like to comment about our experience this summer with re-earred to the open air market. Last year in 2021, it's a direct result of the open air market. We saw unprecedented sales increases through the summer months. I did not think that could possibly be exceeded this year. I thought it was an anomaly. And yet we increased sales this summer by double digits directly as a result of the open air market. There were occasions where I texted the mayor a photograph at 10:45 at night on a Saturday or Friday night, and Diving Cat Studio was packed with people. We had to delightfully increase our hours on Sundays because we used to close at 6 o'clock, and there were still so many people out on the street on Sunday nights and routinely did not close until eight or nine o'clock on Sundays. This is actually carried over to Mondays and Tuesdays where people asked us to stay open later. And so the carryover of what happens on the weekend has taken off into the week. We're open more hours than any other business in Phoenixville. On, on Friday and Saturday evening, we're the only retail business open past 8:00 PM. We typically do 25% of our volume on Fridays and Saturdays after 7:00 PM. One of the things I began doing this summer is that I set up an outdoor table probably about 80% of the weekends. And I personally sat at that table for nine to 10 hours a Saturday. I was astonished at the number of people that I saw. Kids on scooters, people of all ages, walking dogs, families together. Everyone that I engaged and talked to loved the open air market. They felt safe. They felt welcome. They were Phoenixville residents. They were people outside of Phoenixville. I took the time. I did not participate in any follow-up surveys. I don't participate in any other organizations. But I have talked to approximately 50% of the other businesses on Bridge Street where I personally walked in and engaged and talked to the owners. Have you had to find anyone that told me they hated it? So I continue to thank you for your support and the concept of this. I ask for one consideration. We have been here for 15 years, and in 15 Mother's Days, I have witnessed one thing. A Mother's Day weekend, mom does not cook. Every restaurant is packed from Friday night to Sunday night. And the idea of the street being closed on Mother's Day weekend and extending from the end of May to starting at Mother's Day weekend would actually improve public safety because when mom goes out to dinner, the entire family is in tow. The kids, dad, and other members of the family. And when mom And when mom wants to walk around afterwards, they all do so willingly and without complaint. It is the one time that that happens. We have witnessed it for 15 years. I would encourage you to consider that safety factor because there are so many pedestrians out and about that weekend. So thank you and I appreciate your time.
Hi, I'm Dana Waldman. I'm on Hall Street in Phoenixville. So I want to start by saying that Phoenixville is truly a wonderful place to live. It's lively. It's welcoming. It's walkable, has access to trails which keep us all connected. But there's a piece that's missing. We've left out the southeast side of Phoenixville. Okay, thank you. Okay. Guess I'm too short. And we have an opportunity to bridge this gap, to give them a park, a beautiful 7.4 acre park at 100 School Lane. One which connects to the newly proposed Schuylkill Freedom Trail. Maybe we add a footbridge down to the water. This could be a really beautiful asset for Phoenixville. And I don't think anyone here can argue against the benefit of a park. A place to gather with friends and family, to take our dogs, to have picnics, to find solitude, to connect with nature, to breathe in fresh air. But losing this property means losing the opportunity for kids east of Star Street to have a place to play safely without having to cross a high traffic street. One which is only going to become more and more congested with the addition of 80 plus townhomes that the Toll Brothers have proposed. I understand the need for development. I do. And I think Phoenixville is certainly playing its part. But let's not forget about the people of Phoenixville. The people who have lived here, who actively contribute to the community, who've paid for this land with their tax dollars, who vote for officials in hopes that their voices will be heard, whose homes continue to face the impending threats of floods. We know this land is protecting us and our neighbors from floods. As well as purifying and cooling our air and providing essential habitat for wildlife. And once we take that away, it's gone. We don't have much space left. This property is a truly unique puzzle piece for Phoenixville. And you have the power to put it in its place. Please don't let the Toll Brothers take it from us. This is Phoenixville's land. This is our land.
My name is Bill Felton. I'm from Upper Providence. I'm a taxpayer in Phoenixville Borough. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you again about the need to preserve open space and specifically to save the K Center from high density development. There has been an intentional movement to redevelop the former Steel Company property and redevelop and develop various infield properties throughout the borough. This has been a successful endeavor. And as we approach saturation, there is becoming an awareness of the need for quality open space and parks. The size of the K Center property and its location make it ideal for connectivity to the downtown and to the network of existing and proposed regional trails. I ask this council to pursue and exercise any action necessary to prevent the sale of this property and to keep it in the public domain for the use of the residences and the community at large as open space and a community park. Thank you.
Good evening. Ginger Murphy, 222 Church Street. I'm here tonight as a resident to urge members of council not to vote in favor of closing Bridge Street every weekend for four months plus. As a resident of the neighborhood, which at one of many neighborhoods, which takes on the heavy traffic. During these closures, I've really noticed negative effects that do continue. And I would note also, and I know it's been discussed here that Bridge Street carries not only local traffic, you know, people traveling within Phoenixville and to Phoenixville, but also regional traffic because of the river crossing. So that is definitely something then that when the street is closed, is diverted onto neighborhood streets, which really feel the impact. And some of the things that I've continued to notice is safety concerns with speeding vehicles. And it doesn't happen constantly and we do have a speed bump, but it happens enough that I've had some experiences that have really scared me. And so I think that that's important to keep in mind. You know, we have increasing pedestrian traffic on our street, both from those of us who live there with a lot of young kids and people coming to and through town. I've also noticed that at late at night, there continues to be disturbance with really loud. I don't know why it's necessary to have really loud revving engines, but there are individuals who love that and they choose to drive after hours and it is really frequent in the summer and disturbing. As cars detour onto our block. And another thing related is parked cars. I guess people are looking at their phones. They'll sit in a space and idle. And I live in an old house with thick walls. And even during the winter, when I have the windows closed and somebody is sitting there with a speakerphone on, I know far more about their personal lives than I should sometimes. But it's the pollution that concerns me with that. And it is just the noise as Phoenixville has developed. Somebody pointed this out to me. It's they're more hard surfaces for noise to bounce off of. So you have an increasing intensity and increasing traffic and increasing pollution. So I think as you look at this, there's a lot to balance in terms of folks who are coming to town and enjoying town and those of us who live there and feel the impact of it. The other thing that affects us greatly on the neighboring streets, as you two all know, is the parking situation. And one of the things that I've experienced is, and God bless the parking enforcement people, I have seen them yelled at, cursed at. I am currently showing up on a regular basis at district court in support of somebody who took the brunt of misbehavior from another individual. But you know, when, when cars receive a ticket and they're parked there overnight, that's less parking space for those of us who live there, who really do struggle. There's a huge difference between the weekends when the closures are happening and the rest of the week. And it's really, really frustrating. And I don't know if this is related to the closures, but I've noticed it since the closures is that I care for the street trees. I volunteer to take care of the younger ones especially. And I want to tell you the amount of trash that I pick up. I can literally go down one side of the block and up the other and fill a Wawa shopping bag. And it's demoralizing, as is the piles of vomit that I occasionally encounter and more increasingly. So I feel like there's been a real degradation of my quality of life as a resident. So I alternatively would suggest that I'm not opposed to closures downtown for events and making it a special occasion. And I also noticed that when the only main street is closed, there is definitely less of an impact. And yet there's a festive atmosphere out there and not, I mean, on a different topic, but in a way not unrelated. I do support efforts to keep the K Center space open. You know, as the town develops and grows, those, as people have mentioned here, those green spaces become so precious. I literally find myself leaving on the weekend sometimes to drive out somewhere else to find some quiet and some peace. And that's a shame because I moved here for the walkable town and I've supported local businesses that I've lived here. And it just feels really difficult. And so keeping that open space is part of the larger fabric of Phoenixville is more meaningful to me now as a resident than it's ever been. So I wanted to add to that, that I fully support the efforts to keep the K Center space open. Thank you.
Meg, if you want to queue up anybody on Zoom, we'll do one more in room and then we'll switch over to our Zoom audience.
Good evening. My name is Krista Ball. I live at 446 Grant Street up on the north side of Phoenixville across from Franklin Commons. And blessed living on the north side to have access to the amazing recreation center that you all have made your dream become an amazing reality. You found the money for it. You floated the bond issue. You made it happen and it's truly an absolutely incredible regional asset. And in addition to that, you also did the fire station. There's a lot of vision that went into that. There's a lot of courage and it is your legacy of what you've left this amazing town. And I just want to thank you for that. As you've heard tonight from many of the Phoenixville friends of open space, we're a group that is open to everybody and we've passed out thousands of flyers. We've been on the street. We've talked to all of you as much as we can. And we want this to be your dream because you have the power, the people give you the power and we're hoping that you find a way to use it. On January 18th, 2022, you gave authority to your manager, E. Jean Crack, to write a two-page letter to the Phoenixville Area School District. I'm sure you wordsmithed it as much as you could. And there was a lot of work that went into that. And that was after you had had negotiations with them. I'm hoping that this board is aware that in January of 2022, there was a brand new school board, very different than the school board of December 2021. Here we are almost a year later when this became an issue in a public realm. And the community is more and more aware of what could be lost. Once open space is lost, it is truly, truly lost forever. And a domain is there as a way to do something for a public purpose. Nobody is against using it when you're talking about public land. Public land is owned by the public for a reason. And that's really all we're trying to get you guys to encourage and find a way to work with and make it happen. The hearing that's coming up October the 17th. We need you there. We need a letter of support, at least stating what you stated in January of 2022, stating that you're still interested in this property. You want this to remain for a public purpose of which I think there's no better group around that can create a one-of-a-kind legacy with regards to open space and environmental education center, all the ideas that have been floated. And we really truly hope that you guys have a chance to dream and find a way to just slow things down so that you can be involved with taking advantage of this once in a lifetime opportunity. And that starts with Monday, October 17th. I hope that one of you will be there. I hope that all of you will be there. Hope your solicitor will be there. We will be there. Will you? Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Connolly, your microphone is unmuted.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
So I'm speaking in support of the eminent domain and the creation of the park. But I want to make my comments essentially in the form of a question. And the question is, who do we represent? You know, who does the elected officials represent? Who do the open space advocates represent? And I suggest that what we need to understand is that we represent future people. That we are morally responsible for the people today that we represent, but most importantly, for the people in the future. You look around and you think about what people have done in the past that have provided for us today. They were thinking of us. They were thinking of the future, all the parks in the town, the region, the state, the country, all the way around the globe. People think about the future and create parks. It's remember, it's important to remember the numbers. The numbers are that more people alive today, more people will be alive in the future and will experience the benefit of what we do than are alive today or than in the past. The future has big numbers as far as the impact. And finally, the third point is that we can positively affect future people's lives. You know, we, we hear of so many things that we're doing right now that have negative impacts on the future. Creating parks is one thing that most certainly will have a positive impact on people far into the future. So these three ideas are moral responsibility, more people in the future and positive effects. This gives us an opportunity and a responsibility to ensure that future generations enjoy a Phoenixville filled with neighborhood parks. Parks are common ground for all future people. The other question that I want to ask and to probe is what does the comprehensive plan say? In one section, it talks about that there are opportunities to improve pedestrian connections from surrounding neighborhoods to downtown with trails. Well, certainly this project accomplishes that goal of the comprehensive plan. But more importantly is a statement in the plan that talks about when considering the overall acreage in Phoenixville Borough, there it appears to have adequate acreage set aside for its residents based on national standards. I'm not sure what those standards suggest, but the, the text goes on to read, however, based on the projected 2030 population of 22,000 residents and feedback from public input, the community may wish to supplement its acreage, particularly closer to town center. So I return to my question about who we represent. Can we think out into the future as far as 2030? So we believe that we are the voice and we are the choice of action for this particular park. And we hope that the council takes this step and thinks about the future. Thank you.
Mr. Weiser, your microphone is unmuted.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As somebody else mentioned, in January of this year, you sent a letter and offer to the school district regarding the kindergarten center. And I want to take a quick moment and read to you in your own words, two paragraphs of why this property was of interest to the borough and the community. So these two paragraphs say, it is the borough's intent to continue educational or institutional uses on this property. At this time, the borough's plan is to utilize the existing building for such purposes, which will most likely require moderate code-related renovations prior to any occupancy. At this time, there is no intent to expand the existing footprint for such use. The borough also intends to use portions of this property in a park-like manner. Second paragraph states, the borough has discussed the concept of creating a learning center and potential lab space within the existing building. As the borough manages its own water and water distribution system, wastewater treatment plant, trash and recycling operations and urban forest operations, the borough envisions various opportunities to create classroom learning centers for children's in grades K through 12, potential community college learning centers and lab space and college university learning centers and lab space. In addition, the proposed site offers the opportunity for collaboration between the various borough departments on a multitude of sustainable endeavors. These concepts are all in the embryonic stage and no definite, no definitive decisions have been made pending completion of the acquisition process. These are your own words and these are justification for the good that this property can do to the community. And while I don't know the full details of tonight's potential motion to schedule an advertise ordinance. of tonight's potential motion to schedule and advertise ordinances authorizing the condemnation by eminent domain of real property, from what it seems like based on other comments and from the location of this property, which you may decide to use eminent domain for, I would like to propose a question from me or the community, but mainly to you on the council. If you decide that the kindergarten center is not worthy of using eminent domain and does not benefit the community, then I do not understand how so far this year, you've already used eminent domain for a property. And you seem to be on the verge of using eminent domain for another property, which does not appear to benefit the community. And I hope that I'm wrong here, but it does appear to benefit the development project nearby. And the last thing that I will say is if this council feels comfortable using eminent domain to the benefit of developers in this town and does not feel comfortable using eminent domain for a park or for the good of the community regarding the kindergarten center, then that is a huge issue and I personally will never forget that. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. President, may I raise a point of order, please? Would those speakers who online are not identifying whether or not they are borough residents, whereas the speakers in-house did so, I would ask that the speakers online do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ortiz, your microphone is unmuted.
Hello, my name is Katie Ortiz and I am a resident of Phoenixville. We all know there is a housing shortage that has caused massive housing issues. According to an NPR article from this July, housing prices have gone up 30% in the last couple of years, and rent prices have gone up as well since fewer people can afford to purchase a house. One of the ways we can alleviate the pressure of the housing crisis is to ensure that supply meets demand, such as through the construction of new townhomes. I'm sure everyone here is proud of the growth Phoenixville has experienced in the past decade or so. The desirability of our town means that more and more people want to live here, which is becoming impossible due to the housing market issues. The construction of townhomes means more housing is available to middle-income households, which also frees up rentals and low-income housing for people who can't afford a house. The fact that houses will be townhomes means the land will be used economically instead of contributing to suburban sprawl. The location of the townhomes being put up for sale is also within walking distance of the park, the library, and downtown area. Traffic's an issue that's been brought up multiple times just tonight. And more housing in walkable distance means more people have access to our small businesses on Bridge Street without driving or having to find parking. A walkable environment means better health habits for residents, less car pollution and parking issues, and a better sense of community for Phoenixville residents and small business owners. This town is a gem and we all care deeply about its well-being. The townhomes can have a positive effect on our housing market, on our residents, and our environment. On my drive home from work every day, I pass Save the K Center signs in the lawns of people who are fortunate enough to be able to buy a house and walk to their city hall if and when they want to. I support giving more people the same opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Simo, your microphone is unmuted.
Hello, Borough of Phoenixville. My name is Zoe Simo, and I live in East Pikeville Township, and I attend Phoenixville Area High School. I am a member of the High School Environmental Club, and I wish to share student support in protecting the open space at the kindergarten center. As a former student of the kindergarten center, I remember the beautiful campus, and the thought of that open space being turned into townhomes is extremely disheartening. Open space is a finite resource that is slowly dwindling in our town. The land of the kindergarten center, located along the Schuylkill, is not only an ecosystem and home to many plants and animals, but a barrier to protect against floods and mitigate climate change. Knowing that Phoenixville is rapidly developing, students at Phoenixville believe it is crucial to preserve this important area of nature while we still have it. Though future Phoenixville kids will not attend the kindergarten center, turning it into a public park or educational nature reserve would allow them to still enjoy the beautiful space, while townhomes would only further crowd our town and limit the space kids have to play outside. Keeping in mind the original purpose of the kindergarten center, let's vote for the kids. Thank you.
Mr. Foley, your microphone is unmuted.
Hello, my name's Cara Foley. I am a Phoenixville Borough resident. We actually happen to live right across the street from the kindergarten center. First, I would just love to give a shout out to Ms. Simo. That's really awesome that our high school students are paying attention and getting involved. So kudos to you. I would be present at this meeting this evening if I didn't have a baby that needed to go to sleep, but in her honor, I would like to support the Save Open Spaces movement and also request that the council use eminent domain to protect this open space and green area. So thank you.
Ms. Moulton, your microphone is unmuted.
Hi, my name is Alexandra Moulton. I live at 441 St. Mary's Street. I've been a resident of the borough for about two years now. I also would have been in attendance tonight if I was not currently rocking my baby to sleep. I have a two-year-old and a six-year-old, and I really enjoy living in the borough. I love this town and the walkability. But I also am deeply, deeply concerned about our changing climate and preserving open space for our children. Not just our children, but all children. And I urge the borough to leverage eminent domain. And thank you to the Friends of Open Space that inspired me to come on tonight and speak.
Mr. President, I have no more hands raised.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else on Zoom, we do have a few more minutes before our one-hour mark, so if anybody else in council chambers would like to make comment.
Hello, everyone. My name is Emmeline Fox. I live on First Ave here in the borough. And today actually was a cool day at work. I work at a farm and sometimes I get to run preschool programs. And the family that came today, I happened to chat with the mom a little bit, and they're from Phoenixville. And they live really close to the kindergarten center, and they seem to be somewhat aware of what was going on. But and talked about like, oh, like I'm really worried about traffic and what's going to happen. And that, you know, their general had generally a lot of concern. However, like some of the folks who we just heard on Zoom, she has two little kids. They go to bed at seven o'clock and so could not be here. So I'm like, well, that's all the reason that I need to go. And represent the many people I've talked to who seemed like when we were out in the streets and everything, passionate about saving this space. And I agree, we have a housing crisis emerging, and that is an issue that I think is really important to address. But taking land that is being, you know, that's protecting us from severe weather flooding and everything, doesn't seem to be quite the answer. And that all the people who live here in Phoenixville still need open space and these ecosystem resources. And so again, just another, another voice asking for you to use your, the power that you have to use eminent domain and save this land for us. Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, we'll close the first round of public participation. Just note that our mayor was able to join us here at 7:41. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda, item five on tonight's agenda. What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. And with that, we'll move into communications, council participation. Any updates or comments from council tonight for this round? Mr. Kirk.
I got a quick one for you, Mr. President. If council votes later to have its November meeting on November 1st, as I see is on the agenda, I will be unable to make that meeting because of a business commitment I have. So I just want to announce my absence beforehand. Thank you.
Very good. Well, certainly happy to discuss that as well, see if there's a better date. Okay. Any other update, Ms. Berkeley?
Quickly, Mr. Carmenito and I did have the luxury and great pleasure of having a tour of our Phoenix Neo Center last Wednesday. I encourage anyone to read about it. I know another press release just came out last week. Really exciting stuff. We had gone in the springtime to see the water treatment center, and a lot of has happened. We had equipment in the parking lot at that visit, and now we're seeing that equipment starting to get, you know, up and running and things being attached and things being added. So while we still have some things to do, it's exciting to see that project up and running. I know you've been following it very closely and been very much an advocate of it, Mr. President. But it was exciting for us to see and exciting to see it starting to happen for the public. So that was a good update I wanted to share.
I do appreciate because our county commissioner Josh Maxwell was able to join us for a tour that day. So it was great to have him out.
I would just like to make one point of clarification. Borough council does not always exercise its powers of eminent domain when it considers, when it considers, which it does, every potential opportunity very carefully. However, in the limited circumstances that it does opt to utilize its powers of eminent domain, it is always, and we are very careful, that it is always supported by a legitimate public purpose, contrary to comments that were made today.
Thank you, Scott. Seeing no further comment, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you all so much for being here today and those of you who are tuning in virtually. Certainly, it is always important and always a very important part of our democracy to have involvement. So we appreciate everyone for being here and for presenting your thoughts, ideas, and views. And that's really what makes Phoenixville a very special and unique place to be. Just a couple of updates. I wanted to first and foremost, go ahead and announce for Halloween, our official trick-or-treat hours will be on Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And every year, I always reiterate that essentially, you know your neighbors, you know your neighborhood. Please make sure that if you are going out and trick-or-treating, you are doing it safely. There are a number of resources that you'll see posted on our borough website, our fire department, police department websites, that give you great tips and tricks as a parent to make sure that you're keeping, helping keep your children safe as they are out trick-or-treating. But following our tradition, we will go from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Monday, October 31st. A couple other little things. We have a barbecue event this Saturday in the main and Bridge Street parking lot. It is part of a fundraiser for a nonprofit for Orion Communities, and it's also being done in conjunction with our police department. And we have our trunk or treat at the rec center, which will be on the 29th. And so we're very excited to see everyone up there for that. We've had some really exciting birthdays. We actually had a resident, Ted, who lives on Anderson. He turned 100 years old this last week. And then we actually today celebrated nine individuals at our senior center who are all celebrating, we call it 90 or better. So they are either 90 years old or older, and they have turned that in the last year. Finally, you know, certainly with all the joy in our community comes a little sadness. And I do want to recognize the passing of an incredible individual, June Meadows, who passed away this last month. And so June was a longtime employee of the borough and was extremely active in a number of programs. She was very, very active at our senior center and was always a welcome face to see out in the crowd at a lot of our events. And so to June and her family, we thank you and a life well-lived, and we will continue on with that legacy here in this community. So thank you all so much. Thanks for being part of this incredible place.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. With that, we have appointments, public resolutions. Tonight, we don't have any appointments under this section. We do have openings on our back, Harb, Tac, and HRC. So if you're interested in taking part in any of our boards, committees, or commissions, please reach out to your borough council person or staff. This can also be pertaining to future openings. If there's a position that you're interested in that's not yet open, please reach out. We'll be happy to walk you through the process of joining any of our boards or committees or commissions. Moving on to new business tonight, we have two technical project or two technical awards to review tonight. What is council's pleasure for item A?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to award the Insertion Valve Project Bid to LCF Construction, Inc. as the apparent lower bidder for the base bid work in the amount of $27,950 for alternate bid number one, and the amount of $15,795, and for the alternate bid number two, in the amount of $11,180, as recommended by the borough engineer.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, one of the more technical motions of the evening. Questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero and item B tonight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reject all bids received for the water treatment plant high-service pump, BFD project, and authorize staff to rebid the project.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this motion?
Good. Why the rejection? One bid and twice the amount that we had budgeted.
There's a good reason. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. Moving on to ordinances, resolutions. We'll need a motion to acknowledge a couple, Brooke, that will be stepping down from a couple boards.
Mr. President, I'll make the, Mr. President, I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution acknowledging Brooke Ginty for her service on both the borough's Historic Agricultural Review Board and the Human Relations Commission.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Dugan by a hair. Questions on the motion? This will be opening up spots on both Harb and HRC. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries eight zero. I will read into our minutes, the resolution tonight, a resolution of gratitude for the public service of Brooke Ginty as a member of the Historical and Architectural Review Board and Human Relations Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Brooke Ginty served diligently and honorably as a member of these two boards since December 13th, 2017. And whereas Ms. Ginty provided invaluable and dedicated service to the Phoenixville Historical and Architectural Review Board and Human Relations Commission, reporting out to Borough Council during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its most sincere gratitude and appreciation to Brooke Ginty for all of her efforts and commitment to the borough in performing her numerous and dedicated responsibilities over the past five years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Brooke Ginty is recognized and publicly acknowledged for her commitment and efforts in performing her duties, and further does offer their best wishes in her future endeavors. So we will have staff deliver that. I do appreciate the work that Brooke has done on these two bodies. From there, moving on, we have two ordinances to consider tonight. What is council's pleasure for item B?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 25 trees.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on this motion, this is one that we've shopped quite a bit in policy, so this has gone policy, the planning, Tac, back to policy, any questions on our new?
Just for point to the public, the arborist also had a lot of input and reviewed this. It took two rounds in policy and Tac had it for about three months.
I think it's a good step forward.
Yeah, I just wondered if somebody could provide just a little bit of like kind of like a summary of the major changes, like how we got to where we are.
Trial and error.
Trial and error, right. Predominantly, the information that was, that is in there is, is taking the arborist information and reapplying it to the, to the new version of the tree ordinance, the previous one had a lot of, a lot of things that were juxtaposition to each other, so in one, in one phrase it would say one thing and another phrase it would say another. But probably the biggest thing in there was the, the exercise of trying to financially quantify the replacement of trees and things of that sort, so we took a lot of that out of there. We took out all of the hard copy versions of how to do this and how to do that and refer to industry standards, I believe it's called ANSI, A-N-S-I, those standards. And then the, the two additional things that we added was a, an attachment specifically for types of street trees and one specifically for trees in parks and made those the reference point that the planning commission can go to, the residents can go to, that the tree advisory commission can go to. So put all of it, cobble it together and reduce it by a number of pages as well.
I have a number of questions, partly because of my engagement with the issue of trees on, as the, as under the planning commission. Is the heritage tree, which are, recognizes being of unique and intrinsic value to the general public because of size, age, historic association or ecological value, is that new in terms of this? We had that category before, none?
We did not, and we added that in there to give council the ultimate opportunity, very much if you recall, we we did this with the adaptive reuse where we put in the ability for council to have the final say-so of what's important and so it's not just about the width of the tree, the height of the tree, the type of the tree, but where it may be located, all of those things go in and so classifying, having that heritage category gives council ultimate final say-so, not just the fact of the ordinance that says so.
Okay. Is there a reason why we decided that street trees, which are borough trees, shall not be considered heritage trees? That's part of the definition of street trees?
Correct, and the primarily, if you look at what a street tree is, it's, it's never going to reach that category of type of tree because the, these are, one, they're all pin oaks at this point in time, they're failing miserably. Two, the trees that we're replacing them with on the list are trees that are probably not going to reach that stature of heritage. They're not going to be, you know, a hundred-year-old sycamore or something of that nature, these trees are designed to be on the street, under wires and friendly is probably not the right word, but work with water, sewer, gas, infrastructure underground.
Okay. Section twenty-five, one oh five, responsibly for removal and maintenance of street trees. So as I understand it, reading this, it is the borough arborist who will identify whether we are going to remove trees. Am I clear on that or can public works department or some other people say that tree is a problem and take it out? Or does it have to go past the borough, the arborist?
It does not, the, if you look, I forget which, where the category is, but at, at the end of the day, the borough manager has the ultimate say-so in, in making that decision, so if I take enough information, I can override what the arborist says, I don't do that very often. But there are times when we have to make a judgment call and there's a variety of reasons, which I don't want to get into the weeds though, but you could appreciate that, that we're not going to take, at the end of the day, the ultimate say-so of, of the consultant. We have to have staff's ability to weigh in and then that's in concert with either the tree advisory commission or borough council. As you may know, there's times when people come to the podium and there's a lot of emotion. And, and you may know, most recently, there was some emotion at the podium and I made a judgment call and said, we're, we're just going to do it. And that person's pretty happy about that right now. So you have to, you have to weigh that and that, that allows us to do that, so while it's in here, it's a, it's the consultant's input that's important, but they're not going to have the final say-so.
Okay. Section twenty-five, one ten, and this may be more for our solicitor. Significant amount of, and actually one oh nine as well. Detail in this about protecting trees during during product, projects that are under the SALDO. Now, I know that the SALDO itself has woodlands protection and so forth, but a certain amount of language. This seems to be much more detailed and I, I want to get you to confirm that a developer can't say, well, I don't have to do this because it's not in the SALDO and I'm operating under the SALDO. So this is protecting trees during construction and land development plans.
Sorry, Mr. Moore, if you'll just give me a second, since I can't pull it up on our, online, I have to use the manager's copy.
So I don't know, and I'm wondering whether maybe this needs to be incorporated into the SALDO.
Well, so these provisions, what I typically see is that the provision is in the tree ordinance as it is, but it will then need to be cross-referenced in the SALDO. Which I don't know off the top of my head if the tree ordinance provisions are, but as you know, I think there are some areas of the SALDO that we intend to clean up in the near future and that is something that should be placed on the list.
In particular, I'm concerned that developers who are supposed to be following these tree protection zone requirements, skip it or don't put the fencing up and all of a sudden, trees get lost that are, they theoretically committed to when they, when they got permission to begin building and like, oops, oh, we were supposed to protect that, you know? I, I want to make sure that they're not going to have, be able to say, well, it's not in the SALDO, so I don't have to comply with it.
I can say, I don't think it's going to go missed because our consultants, our planner and our engineer are going to be reviewing these provisions as well as our SALDO and stormwater management those types of ordinances, but.
I can tell you that the, the planner and the engineer weighed in on these and so when these plans come through, you're going to have a lot of looks that weren't occurring before where the tree advisory commission is given a set of the plans, they're going to be looking at it. The arborist is given a set of plans, they're going to be looking at it, staff is looking at it. The planner that we chose has a landscaping component to that and we wanted them involved and then the engineer, so the comments that are going to be coming from the, from those consultants in some way, shape or form, just as we do with the fire chief. When the fire chief puts in certain recommendations in that enabling resolution that approves the plan, sometimes there's a fire department, sometimes there's not, it just depends on, on what they have to say. Those will all be places for the engineer when they're out on site and the process begins to develop and then when they establish the pre-construction meeting, they're going to have all of these frames of reference to be able to point to.
Okay.
And Mr. Moore, I would, I, I would leave you with this, is I think your point's taken as far as it needing to be cross-referenced in the SALDO. However, the way that it's laid out here is the way I typically see it and I would recommend that this provision be included in this ordinance and be passed and then we cross-reference it at a later date.
Okay. Then the only other concern I had and I kind of, I would like to get a clarification on this, twenty-five dash one eleven permitting, permits. Her, hanging lights and other seasonal or holiday displays on street trees or public trees, when permitted, all such displays shall be removed at a date designated in the permit, so is this new that people who have a street tree or a, a public tree at their property have to get a permit in order to decorate it? So I saw that and I thought, I don't know whether we're going to make.
I'm sorry. Wrote the whole thing, so it's, got to remember exactly where, where these frames of reference came through. There are, there are times when, when people want to do those types of things and we want to make sure that they're doing it the right way and so this is just a, a method of making sure that somebody gets, lets us know they're going to do that, gets the permit to do it and then it gives us a window of time to cancel out that permit when the, when the timeframe has gone.
Right.
It's similar to what we do, we, we get a lot of requests for people to put ribbons on, on our streetlights. We allow them to do it, but under certain parameters, they have to do, they have to hand tie them, they have to put them up, up by a certain time, take them down by a certain time, this is all consistent with that process.
Okay, because it's quite possible that there are people, you know, in the presidential's or something like that who've been putting Christmas like, Christmas bulbs and Christmas lights on their street tree and now they, they have to be aware that they need to get a permit.
Any other questions from council? Okay. We have a motion in a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And third, tonight, under ordinances and resolutions, we have a motion to amend our taxation special chapter, it's council's pleasure.
Motion to adopt an ordinance to amend chapter twenty-four taxation special.
Second. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss, questions on this motion?
I was going to give a quick background on this, so earlier this year, Pennsylvania passed Act fifty-seven and that provided certain updates to municipal real estate tax collection procedures. Specifically, it allows a tax owner who has not received the notice that was sent to them to file an attestation and that attestation, along with a payment of the taxes that were due at that time, would allow them to wipe clean any interest fees and costs that had accrued as a result of them not receiving their initial tax notice. You know, if it got lost in the mail, if it was handed to somebody that wasn't at the right address, that type of thing. So it's a little bit extra protection for property owners in the borough. So this ordinance basically amends our local tax collection procedures to reflect that state act and allow our residents to take advantage of that waiver provision.
Any questions on the explanation? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. We do not have any public hearings scheduled for tonight. So we will move on to reports of committees, boards and commissions, starting with Mr. Moore and planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. President, there was no business in front of the planning commission in October, so that meeting was canceled. Our next meeting will be Thursday, November tenth at six PM.
Thank you, Ms. Dugan with Harb?
There's nothing but the sign that we already approved, so that's all.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Kirchner with regional planning committee.
I did not attend the last meeting because of a business conflict, so with Deb Johnson filled in and I have nothing to report.
Very good, thank you, Rich. And back to Ms. Dugan with rec board.
Okay, um, there's a lot, obviously, so I'm not going to list everything that we're offering. First of all, I do want to remind everybody, I think the mayor may have mentioned this already, but we've got the fall festival on the twenty-ninth and from twelve to three, so I hope everybody can come out and make that one, because that's going to be a lot of fun. Other things that we have, we have a blood drive that's coming up on December twenty-eighth and that would be, that would be really nice, you know, this town is so giving and friendly that I think that, you know, a blood drive would be, is something that you could, if you can, if you can do it, that would be great. We also have a free car seat safety check sponsored by Safe Kids Chester County and that's Monday, October twenty-fourth from twelve to three. So if you're a little concerned about, you have to make sure, you want to get your car seat, make sure that's correct and that's a great thing to attend. Other than that, we've got the, the open gym that any kids that are under eleven need to have parental supervision between twelve and seventeen, you have to have a membership then. We've got another interesting thing called youth quad ball, which is kind of based on the Quidditch thing that they did in the, the Harry Potter series, that's, that could be fun, that's going to be Sundays in November. Got yoga for youth yoga, jump starts, jump start sports, fall T-ball, the Young Rembrandts, these are things that we do all the time. A couple of the schools out workshop, there will be on the days that the, the school's out for random holidays, there, it's fun, it's a good day to go and get some experience that, you know, something that you don't do, like the FaceTime theater thing and all kinds of science explores. Snapology, don't forget, we're still doing the snow, so much fun, that's a, that's a pretty popular one, we've got tai chi, Satori dojo, which is new, I'm not even sure what that, how that works. The table tennis, that's a, that's a new thing too, that starts, that's Tuesday from six to nine and Saturdays from nine to twelve and it's just a drop in five dollar cost. I think that's about, we've got women's volleyball, all of the, all of our sports that are team sports, we've got a lot of that with volleyball, basketball, dodgeball and obviously pickleball, because that's a big popular one. So everything is available on the website, I really hope that everybody checks that out because we do offer so many programs. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Dugan. Moving on, Ms. Webb with back.
The back meeting was moved because of the holiday yesterday, so it's actually next Monday at seven PM and there are still openings on the committee.
Great, Ms. Berkeley with Tac.
We also have openings and our next meeting will be next Monday, ten seventeen.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to council action referred from council committees, Ms. Berkeley with police and personnel committee.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert House to the recreation board with a term expiring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, that was recommended in committee three zero, second. And I don't know if Mr. House, I don't see him in the audience, I don't know if he's online, we did have a lovely interview with him and nice discussion in the police and personnel committee. And I think some of his experience and volunteer work will lend nicely to this experience as well, so I feel very confident in the recommendation from the committee.
Great. So we have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb to appoint Robert House to rec. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, my next motion is a little bit of a mouthful. Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the purpose of joining with other municipalities as a member of the Chester County Emergency Response Commission contingent upon review and approval of the borough solicitor that was recommended in committee three zero, second. And I know in police and personnel, there was a nice explanation to that, so if you'd like to have that now, I would certainly let the chief give us a little. you'd like to have that now, I would certainly let the chief give us a little.
Sure, uh, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Webb. Chief, if you'd like to give us a little background on this one.
Yes, Mr. President. So no agency in Chester County Municipal Police Department can have their own SWAT team. So we gather forces, entire Chester County is part of it. We have officers here on our police department that participate, and together we put a pool of money in. What the resolutions basically asked them for is now they can write their own brands, they have a, their own unique identifying tax I D number, and they won't need twenty or thirty municipalities to sign off on a grant they could write it themselves. Nothing's changed, other than there is a committee board for equipment, for training, things of that nature. That explains.
Thank you, Chief. Questions on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries eight zero. Anything else from police personnel?
I would just again make another commercial for, we have a lot of people that want to get involved, a lot of passionate people, a lot of passionate people in the audience today. We have quite a few commissions and boards that have vacancies, so please check that list out. It is on the borough website. If you have questions, reach out to one of us, whoever you might be most familiar with or your local council person. Our committee, um, is very welcoming. It's not as big of a forum, so it's, it's very gentle to have that interview. And we have nice discussion, um, and we welcome involvement.
Absolutely. Okay, we'll move on to Parks and Recreation Committee with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Um, we had our previous meeting. And so we have just two issues for the committee, um, for the, for the council. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three dates and plans for the Phoenixville Inside Out. Getting May twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, and, and ending October ninth, twenty twenty-three, recommended in committee four zero second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Carmenito, questions on this motion? Ms. Dugan?
Um, I personally would have preferred if we had tried to make this just on the first Friday is when we did that. And I had a lot of feedback that that would have been better for a lot of people. However, I have seen surveys that have indicated that that they're, the people that talk to me are the ones that are not fans of it, and then everybody else seems to be very much in support of it. So I am in, because of that, I have every intention of supporting this.
Thank you, Dana.
I, I just want to add, Kelly, for the purposes that we're, since we're in front of the council with this, we did have the survey that was conducted in midsummer, and I asked you earlier, I can't access any of the past stuff. Just like qu- quick summary of the, the size of the, how many people responded. The percentage in terms of the level of support, and you actually did some characterization of some of the written responses, of which there were hundreds, which I thought was very impressive.
So, um, with the survey that we did, there were six hundred and eighteen, uh, responses. That, uh, included, uh, about seven questions, five of them being specific to all, and then two of them, if you were a business, kind of just giving some general information. We asked the question of if you have taken advantage of the doubt, or taken advantage of the inside out. Um, around ninety percent had said that they did. Within that, eighty-nine percent, I should say. Um, the other portions of that, it asked if you have spent more time downtown with the closure, um, since it has started. Fifty-eight percent said yes, um, twenty-three percent said no, seventeen percent said about the same. Uh, with that, we also asked about just providing any additional information, um, about your open air experience. Uh, with that, I can give a little bit of a synopsis on those open ended questions. Around seventy-nine of the let's see here. Uh, five hundred, five hundred and fourteen responses. Some of them skipped that question, the, the open ended question. Seventy-nine percent, uh, there was, or seventy-nine respondents were about general complaints of parking. Um, a request for better traffic control was about forty-two of those responses. Fifty-seven of those responses asked for once a month. Thirty-nine, uh, of those responses would like to see it stop altogether. Twenty-two, uh, responses acted, asked for more or different activities to occur during the closure. And two hundred and fifty-five were satisfied with how things are and didn't want to see any major changes. The other question was, um, which best describes you? And out of the six hundred and eighteen responses, seventy-four point nine-two percent lived in the borough. Three and a half percent own a business in the borough. Another three and a half percent own and, own and live in the borough, own a business and live in the borough. And seventeen, almost eighteen percent, uh, do not, uh, of either one of those options. The other information was just more contact information and hours of operation.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that, and I just wanted to make sure that the rest of the council and also the public had heard and got a chance to hear, um, that input.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. It, it, it is somewhat disconcerting after about, uh, after a year or so that the, I think there's still lack of consensus among the business community. From what I see, it's, it's fifty-fifty. On this, and, and I, I just wish that the business community could come together with the, with the residents and the affected neighborhoods and come up with some kind of plan. Uh, I, I do feel like, well, I don't, it's not that I feel like it. I think the borough is taking the lead here. For better or for worse, but I, I think that's just the reality on the ground. There, there are policing issues that I think need to be addressed. I, I read them in some of the email comments that we got with regards to trash. And other things as, uh, as Ms. Murphy mentioned. But Mr. Mcfee raised an interesting point about extending it to Mother's Day. I looked at the calendar, that would be two more weekends, moving it up to, I, I believe, May fourteenth. Which, um, being the son of a mother and the, the husband of another mother, um, you know, I, I, I appreciate the importance of Mother's Day. So I, I think that's something to consider. I, 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 I do hope that some of these policing issues get addressed, uh, going forward. And I, I know that's not, that's, that's not germane to the motion here, but it's out there. And I, I hope that gets addressed. There was a question raised about, uh, a traffic impact study. And, um, I, I think a reference that was done in February of twenty twenty-one. And I, I have a question. If there has been a traffic impact study done since then, uh, specifically on the weekends during the summer, uh, past summer, when there was no pandemic shutdown and but there, the, uh, Bridge Street was closed down. And also the, the gentleman who raised a concern about getting a speed bump in the three hundred block of Washington Avenue. Uh, something could be done to, uh, address that as well. Uh, there, there are, there are a number of issues here that I, I think still need to be addressed. Like I said, I wish the business community could, um, could take more of a lead on this, come together on it. But, um, you know, because there is a void there, it's, it's left to borough staff and and the, uh, Parks and Rec Committee to sort of handle this, so. But tho- those are my concerns, but that is a question that's out there. Has there been a, a traffic impact study done since February twenty twenty-one?
Uh, pretending to the, the one question that, um, we, we do traffic studies every, every week. Um, so there's depend, I mean, we have three devices, I believe, that were. Yeah, so I mean, there, there's study, I mean, but a traffic impact study is an engineer-based study. Our police department does traffic analysis, or I'm not sure the exact title, but traffic analysis studies, not the engineer level. And they're, and that's every, the, the machines are never not being used. So there's always some part of the borough where we're checking and, and monitoring, so. Yeah, absolutely, Chief.
So, Mr. Kirk, are we just completed one? I got it this evening, and it's coming out to all borough council on Washington Avenue, specifically in the three hundred block going eastbound, both during when the road on Bird Street is closed as well as when it's open. So we'll be able to share that with you at, at the next committee meeting, and council will decide what the pleasure is.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Mr. Weiss?
Uh, yeah, um, just to, um, follow up to, uh, to Mr. Kirkner's comment. I'm kind of interested in having a conversation about expanding out to Mother's Day as well.
Um, is, we certainly can do that either on the floor now, or we could also, um, amend later. So part of my intention of starting the conversation early, uh, in terms of, you know, we announced this at last month's council meeting, we had the Parks and Rec meeting. It got matriculated up to here. Part of my intention with that was to get early decisions that businesses can actually plan for next year. I think we can always look to, uh, look to and discuss other options and improvements. But I think starting out with what, uh, what I've heard worked well from the retail businesses that we've talked to, um, was it, uh, the first step. And it certainly, uh, I would want to research the Mother's Day component just to see what other T C Es we have, what other events might be happening that could impact that, but, um, it certainly was a nice notion. Um, so I mean, I, I think this is something we could continue to, to examine, but I, I thought getting the, the bookends in place was an important first step for, uh, everybody to be able to plan for.
Couldn't agree more.
I would definitely agree, and I, I love the idea of thinking about Mother's Day and just May as a very, like, as an event, someone who plans events, like, that's a big time of year. Someone who owns a business, that's a big time of year. I think having that discussion, but to your point, Mr. Ewald, getting what was agreed to last year, because again, we were at this podium talking about a compromise and making it work within, considering all interest, and this was the compromise we came up with. It seems to have gone well. Uh, we've gotten a lot of good feedback, so let's stick to what we agreed to, and then let's look at that. Because again, to your point, I think it would be very interesting to look at what events are happening. Could it really facilitate a wonderful weekend, Mother's Day weekend, like season opener, maybe? But at least now we know what we did tried and true, we're gonna stick to.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I, I have one more thing I failed to bring up about the open container. And I, I don't see that included in this, this motion here. But is that something that's implied in this motion, or is that something we can?
I thought that was within the plans, um, of the, yeah, so, so that, that, so the dates and plans of, uh, P X B Inside Out, the plans pertain to the street locations and the, um, ordinances that we had, um, lifted.
Okay, it is, it is left in, then?
Uh, that's the intention, yes.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, police chief, uh, we've discussed this at, at Parks and Rec without, of really not having issues um, pertaining to, to that, so.
And during the closure, we check in monthly in police and personnel and public safety with both chiefs, as well as EMS about whatever might be occurring during the closures, if there's any concerns and things like that.
Well, based on what I've heard, there are concerns about it from, uh, you know, a few of the residents and, and business owners.
But I, I would just draw a line between consumption and open container. So there, there could be consumption issues. That doesn't necessarily mean it's, you know, related to an open container issue.
Right.
So.
Go.
The fine line.
True. Thank.
Any other questions or comments tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Moore?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve a temporary community event application for the Burn Off the Bird five K on the School River Trail on Saturday, November twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, from nine A M to ten thirty A M. Uh, street closures per the map attached, uh, the application from eight thirty A M to eleven thirty A M.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan for the Burn Off the Bird Annual Five K. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have a seven zero one approval for the, uh, Burn Off the Bird on November twenty-sixth. Mr. Moore, anything else?
Uh, nothing at this time. Um, no, no, there are no other issues. There was some discussion, uh, at the previous meeting about some, um, behavior issues that are one of the gains, but that's been resolved, or it's being dealt with, uh, so. I, I think the only other thing I will point out is that work has begun on building the mountain bike course, which it means that the previous, what was the large dark dog park is closed, because they're doing the construction there, look forward to that, putting that club up. Uh, the small dog park is still open, that's pretty open, and we will be fixing up what was next to the small dog park, the large, large dog, dog park.
It's an exciting project. All right, with that, we'll move on to policy committee with Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a motion that, uh, council schedule and advertise an ordinance to repeal and replace the ordinance, uh, on fire and emergency services recommended in the policy committee through the zero.
Second.
Much by Ms. Kirchner, second by Mr. Weiss. So this is a repeal and replace, um, of the ordinance. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to review it. Mr. Crack, if you want to give us a rundown?
Sure, um, and, and is, uh, the, obviously, uh, we had to, uh, make a lot of changes with the, uh, uh, bringing up the speed, the new fire station, the new fire chief. The transition with part-time, uh, the, uh, the work of the, uh, Phoenix Hills Hook and Ladder, number one. And, uh, in addition to that, uh, changes to the international fire code. And as Mr. Kirchner and, and, uh, the, the committee would recall, we were actually talking about discussion of fireworks, because there was a model ordinance. In the version that policy looked at, it, it just continued with the same information from, uh, what was there previously. We were able to take the, uh, by permit version of the, uh, the model ordinance and, uh, replace that in this. So it is now, uh, that fireworks ordinance is, will be in place be, if this goes through, uh, before the end of the year. Uh, that fireworks component will be, uh, you have to do it by permit, and it's limited to, uh, uh, when council authorizes the permit. And basically, but for, uh, uh, an event that we put on ourselves for the Independence Day, there really is no, uh, uh, ability to do fireworks that used to occur maybe at the foundry or for this location or that. That's all been taken out. Uh, council has the ultimate say by permit, and so that's all been put into this, this new ordinance.
I would just add on to that, that the new fireworks regulations are based on a recently passed state law. Um, and part of the reason some of the perhaps previous locations for fireworks are no longer permitted is because state law no longer permits fireworks in certain locations within certain distances of buildings and residential areas and that type of thing. And, and we're talking big display fireworks, not sparklers and the stuff that, uh, you know, we share with our children.
Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Anything else out of policy tonight?
Nothing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss with I T T?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, no action to report at this time. In our past meeting, we had a really robust conversation, um, about the concerted efforts that staff are making to help mitigate some of the stormwater management challenges experienced by some within the borough. Uh, really appreciate everything that staff's doing in that conversation. So, uh, uh, we'll continue to pursue, um, areas of funding within those spaces, but just wanted to thank staff for that. Our next meeting is, uh, one week from tonight on the eighteenth at seven P M. Uh, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Ms. Dugan with finance?
There's nothing more that we haven't already covered.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will open up the next round of public participation. Those joining us virtually, uh, you can raise your hand digitally, a member of staff will. Uh, those joining us virtually, uh, you can raise your hand digitally, a member of staff will announce your name and, uh, unmute your microphone if you can state, uh, if you're a resident or, uh, not a resident. Um, and then those in the room here tonight, if you'd like to, uh, step to the podium and complete the form, uh, and let us know, uh, your name and, uh, whether or not you're a resident. So this is the second final round of public participation. Seeing none online? And none in the room. We'll close the second round of public participation. At this point, uh, we'll need a motion to.
Uh, I'll make a motion to recess to executive session for purposes of real estate and litigation.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirkner. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll now recess into executive session. We will return after executive session. Chief, are you staying under?
Yep.
Okay.
You may not.
Yeah, I take all my stuff. I don't trust these people.